I would like to call to order the January twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Debra Rain, here. Peter Piffco.
Here.
Stephen Mayans.
Here.
Will Corrente.
Here.
Patrick Mayfield.
Here.
Gene Marseille, Jr.
Present.
And let the record reflect that Sam Fish is not present.
All right, next order of business is approval of December seventeen, two thousand twenty-four minutes. Has everyone had the chance to review them? Any changes? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is report of the planning staff. Ms. Van.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. Angela Van, Planning and Zoning Administrator, just had one case that was approved since your last Planning Board meeting, Prime Corner Commercial Plan Development. This was a request to construct, um, um, two-four-hundred-square-foot chapeau-de and a fifty-three-hundred-square-foot Chick-fil-A on the northwest corner Military and Forty-Fifth Street. You heard this at your November two-thousand twenty-four meeting, and Commission approved this at their January sixth twenty-five meeting. And that concludes staff report. Any questions?
Any questions of staff? If not, thank you so much. Okay, next on the agenda are remarks by the chairperson, of which I have none. That then brings us to the Declaration of Ex parte Communications. And let me begin by saying that I have had no ex parte communications, I've received no written communications, I have conducted no investigations, I have made no site visits, I've received no expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. And let's start with you, Debra. Anything to disclose?
As it relates to the items on the agenda, I have not had ex parte communications, have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
With regards to Planning Board case nineteen sixty-five, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions, and I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As to Planning Board case nineteen sixty-five, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Patrick?
As to the matters of this evening's agenda, I have not had expecter, ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you, Gene.
As to all items on the agenda, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be ma, be made part of the record.
Thank you so much. All right, next on the agenda is the swearing in of speakers. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening to please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to given this proceeding will be truthful? Thank you, may be seated. Next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none. That then brings us to Planning Board case nineteen sixty-five. May we hear from the applicant? Or Mr. Green first?
Yes, if I could, please. Rick Green, Development Services Director, and I wanted to provide both the board and the public, um, in the audience, just kind of an overview of what's going on, because you may hear some discussion on things that are not related to the case today. So just to provide you a very quick overview, um, a while back, um, city staff and some of the residents from the Northwood area, um, met with Commissioner Ward, and we discussed the need for a study of the North Flagler area. We define that as the area north of Reibovich to the very south. Um, as you know, they have an approved plan development with a thousand fifty-nine units, so it's that area just north of them, all the way to the northern city boundary, um, east of Flagler Drive. So subsequent to that, um, that meeting, we started looking at a variety of different things within that corridor. We looked at the zoning within the North Flagler corridor. We did a parcel-by-parcel analysis of every single lot within that corridor. We looked at the sizes of each of the lots, the depths, the total lot area, just again to get more familiar. We looked at the building heights within the corridor, and again, this is a matchline, so Osprey picks up here, but you have north and south. Um, we also looked at the potential build-out if we apply the existing zoning that's on the parcel, on the property, um, for each of these parcels. And then on October twenty-first of last year, we had a mayor commission workshop just across the hall, and specifically after gathering all this information, we presented it to both the mayor and the city commission, and we had specific questions. Should there be a maximum height within the, within the district? Should there be incentives to achieve a greater height limit? So if you remember what we did with the Seemud District, we established a base height, and through a series of incentives, you could get additional height, but the purpose there was those incentives would benefit the neighborhood, um, around the corridor. So these are some of the, um, incentives that we suggested and presented to the mayor and city commission. And then lastly, we asked, should there be a maximum floor area ratio imposed on the properties within that quarter? So we got feedback, we started working on these regulations. And what we intend to do now is we are working on a draft code amendment for an overlay district, which you will see, because that is a code change, so we will be bringing that to you in the immediate future. Um, we hope to have a community meeting next month, early, hopefully early February, where we will get feedback from the community, from the development community, um, once we have a draft of the regulations that we are proposing. Will they then bring it back to the planning board, so you'll see it at that point, and then following your recommendation, we'll take it to the city commission for two hearings. So that's kind of what we're working on right now. I bring that to your attention because tonight we're discussing the Apogee project right here. Um, they submitted almost two years ago, so they're not going to be subject to the overlay district that we are creating, but subsequent to that October twenty-first workshop, we received two applications, um, that greatly exceeded the height that we were recommending to the city commission. That's not for discussion tonight, so I just wanted to make it very clear, we're going to have a community meeting next month, we're going to discuss all of these issues. Um, these projects are moving forward on a separate timeframe, but the hope is that, you know, you, we will have an overlay district in place that will guide the redevelopment of these properties. So, um, I just wanted to bring that to your attention as we venture into the review of the Apogee project tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, may we hear from the applicant first, I think?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Brian Seymour, I'm the attorney for the applicant with the Gunster Law Firm. Uh, with us tonight are Andrew Chesnick and Rick Fortenberry from the Related Group, uh, Bernardo Fort Brunsica, and Fidel Zabik from Architect Tonica, and, uh, my trusty colleague, John Roach, who you'll hear from, uh, a little bit later, who is a planner with our firm. Um, as you know, you are all here, uh, when we presented this previously, this is a project, uh, that is being presented by the Related Group, and the Related Group's goal is, uh, to provide, uh, not just something for the residents, but something for their community. And what we believe we've done, particularly since we were last here, uh, is to work with the city and the community, uh, as a committed partner, uh, to find ways to benefit everybody involved. So as you know, this is forty-nine oh-six North Flagler, and includes, uh, just under one-point-five acres, uh, including some submerged lands. Right now, they're a single-family residence with two, uh, accessory dwelling units, uh, on the site, although it is occupied by the single family, uh, and Rick just showed some of this, I'm going to skip through real quick, it is, uh, has land use and zoning for multifamily, the entire east side of Flagler, basically, uh, other than a couple of things you see there, the RPD is, uh, Alba, uh, the open spaces park, but basically, all of that is meant for an MF thirty-two, uh, designation, and, uh, indicates the view of the city commission for this project going forward, and that's really where we started with the design of Apogee, is that vision of how do we make this work with the MF thirty-two zoning that the city commission put on the property. What we've got is a proposal, uh, to, uh, rezone the project. When it was first presented, this is what you saw. Um, it was forty-six units with a twenty-five-story tower of a little over two-hundred-and-eighty-seven feet, two-level parking structure with a hundred in spaces, uh, hundred spaces, which is about three more than required, and amenities focused on the rooftop and the parking garage. And what you're seeing tonight is a reduction. During our last meeting, uh, the staff raised concerns with height, uh, they wanted to look at the range of the previously approved building, which is Alba, and, um, wanted to meet the twenty-foot RPD setback. So we worked together based on your comments, because you all unanimously said, basically, project's a good project, but it needs some work. That we should come and work with the city, and if it's something we and staff could come back with together, that would be something that we, you thought you could look favorably upon. Mr. Cornet stated that changes need to be more in compliance with what the city's willing to accept, which was a pretty common concept. Um, and Mr. Mayans mentioned that there is a need for this, this is where the city is going, talked about some of the past and the future of the city, uh, but that the design itself needed to be worked on. So we've spent the last several months, uh, working with staff and architects, uh, trying to figure out how we can try to do that, and that's what we're presenting tonight. And so following the direction, what you've seen tonight is a reduction. It is now not forty-six, but thirty-six units. It is now a twenty-one-story tower of two-hundred-and-thirty-five feet, two inches, um, and, uh, ninety-nine parking spaces with only eighty-two now required. So this results in a fifteen-plus percent reduction in the number of units, a sixteen percent reduction in stories, eighteen percent reduction in overall linear height, uh, it is the exact same height as Alba. Uh, we have more than a fifteen percent reduction in required parking, which leaves us with more of a surplus parking, so we don't end up parking into the neighborhoods, um, in any way, and that was something that we also wanted to be clear about. So that's what we've been working on. So what I'm going to do is now shut up and let John tell you what it actually looks like.
Good evening, thank you, Brian. For the record, John Roach, uh, land planner with the Gunster Law Firm. Um, so as Brian talked about, you know, reduction in the number of units and reduction in the height, with regards to the site plan, um, with the exception of those changes Brian mentioned, the site and landscape plan pretty much, uh, remain unchanged. Um, we did increase the south setback, uh, to comply with the twenty-foot RPD setback that staff, uh, requested, so we have complied with that, and I'll talk about the, the changes and the waivers as a result of our modifications. Uh, that waiver regarding the south setback from the RPD designation has been eliminated. Um, otherwise, our only adjustments in terms of site and landscaping were very minor and addressed, uh, some of staff's concerns that upon recent middle, there were some questions with regards to the access points on Flagler Drive, turning radius and so forth, so we addressed those. But in terms of the site and landscape, uh, pretty much everything is, uh, almost exactly like you saw it over a year ago. So this is the south elevation of the building, and this is what you saw on December twenty-twenty-three. This is the two-hundred-and-eighty-seven feet, four inches, in terms of building height, uh, and then the mechanical equipment on top of that. And what we are proposing this evening is shown in comparison on the right side of the screen here. We are down to two-hundred-and-thirty-five feet, two inches, so just over, uh, fifty-two feet in reduction. Um, you can see that area shaded here. That is an approximately, or actually over eighteen percent reduction in the building height, um, from what we were previously. These are the renderings that we presented to you, uh, back in December twenty-twenty-three, and I'm just going to show how those renderings compare to the new renderings, um, with the, the adjusted building height. So this is the previous approval, and then you see the reduction. Again, pretty much nothing has changed in terms of, uh, the Flagler Drive appearance and the pedestrian, uh, experience along Flagler Drive. Uh, pretty much everything has been limited to adjusting the height of the building and bringing it down to the same height as Alba. This is a rendering from the northwest corner of the property along Flagler Drive. Again, pretty much nothing changed along Flagler Drive, uh, the reduction in the building height. And then this is the, we added this rendering, it's the approach from Flagler Drive into the development at the south access point. Uh, this is what you would experience as a pedestrian along Flagler Drive. We just really wanted to emphasize, um, you know, what that experience would be and the height of the building in terms of the back. Uh, you can see the tower in the foreground there, or, excuse me, in the background. Um, the adjustments really have no change in terms of the pedestrian experience along Flagler Drive. With regards to the waiver, we had previously requested, uh, several waivers, some of those have been reduced, and actually, a couple have been eliminated. Uh, the first one was with regards to minimum acreage, one to establish the RPD, uh, but we had also included a waiver with regards to the minimum land area necessary to ask for additional density associated with our submerged land. Because of our reduction in the number of units, um, we've actually been able to eliminate that waiver, so we're not asking for any additional density for the submerged land, we are complying with code, uh, from that standpoint. The other, uh, the second waiver was with regards to building height and how its correlation to, to setbacks. Um, as a result, as Brian indicated, um, there's approximately a twenty percent reduction, um, as a result of the lower building height and therefore less setback that's required. Uh, so you can see all those adjustments there. Um, the, the other waivers, um, with regards to the residential plan development, waiver number three listed there, that's the one that has been eliminated, because we now have the twenty-foot setback from the south property line. And then the separation of access points was the only one that grew slightly, and that was to address a concern from the city's traffic engineer with regards to turning radius, so we adjusted that to accommodate those and satisfy staff's concerns. The parking drive aisle with the fence height at the, uh, side and rear setback, as well as the foundation planting, remains unchanged. So with the number of units going down, uh, there's also a reduction in the number of trips associated with the project. The AM peak hour is one trip less, uh, the PM peak hour is three fewer trips, so you can see those numbers there. As we presented to you previously, you know, the applicant remains committed to continuing to work with the adjacent Northwood Harbor Neighborhood Association on various community improvements going forward, um, and that includes when a contractor is hired, bringing them into the team, working with those residents on various logistical aspects of the construction, and address concerns that may be associated with that. So we've met the requirements for all of the amendment standards, the waiver standards, as well as the site design standards. We are asking for your recommendation of approval this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank, thank you so much. You have something you want to say, Brian, before we? Okay. Any questions? Gene, let me start with you. Patrick?
Uh, could you just review one more time the, the site setbacks? Um, I skipped over that slide pretty quick, but just the four sides and what's complying and what's, what's being asked for in terms of the waiver?
You mean the ones relating to the height and the?
No, just, just these here, ever, just the four side setback. You're saying there was an adjustment on the south side?
Yeah, so there, there's two, there's two waiver components when it comes to setbacks. One is, as soon as you ask for a residential plan development, you have to have a twenty-foot setback around the perimeter of the development. Previously, we were not meeting that requirement on the south side. We were like, between seventeen and eighteen feet. As a result of the changes and working with staff, we have been able to comply with that twenty foot, so that's the one that got eliminated.
That was totally eliminated.
That was the, the waiver number three that was eliminated. The other aspect of setbacks waivers deals with the height of the building.
Right, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
So we, those have adjusted and been reduced as our height has come down.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
So, um, right?
Right now, the, um, you, you said that it was, uh, one-point-five acres with, uh, point-two-six acres submerged, so the actual dry land that's available right now is the one-point-one-nine, right?
Correct.
And so if it's MF thirty-two, that means you could do thirty-two acres per, uh, thirty-two units per acre, right? So what does that put you, like, one shy of, am I doing the math right? Would be thirty-two times one-point-one-nine?
If you purely look at the upland, correct. The code does provide for, and there's a formula in the code, it actually provides two scenarios, and it's the lesser of, I think it's the lesser of the two. You get a percentage of the density attributed to the submerged land, or it also looks at how many units you get on the upland, and you get a percentage of those, and you, you follow A or B. We comply, before, we were asking to utilize one-hundred percent of our submerged land density, so at thirty-two units per acre, the point-two-six acres of submerged land, we wanted to utilize one-hundred percent of that. We've removed those units, and now we are following the formula that is in the code, we are not asking for any waiver associated with that.
Okay, so, I mean, it comes out to like thirty-eight point-oh-eight, right? So basically, you're asking for point-nine-two of a unit?
Off of the, yeah.
Yeah.
Taking the submerged land and adding, yes.
Okay, cool. And then, um, the picture you showed earlier showed a residence basically directly to the north of it, is that a true depiction? Or is that just a?
In the rendering? No, that's a representation of the, yeah.
Okay, all right. And then, uh, lastly, I think way back when, when you came, uh, to us, there were some concerns about where FPNL was putting the infrastructure and how close to the street, where am I confusing cases?
I don't recall any, any issue with regards to FPNL.
Okay, cool. That's it for now.
Not that we're aware of.
Okay, yeah, then, you know, too many cases.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions?
I don't have the floor plans, no. I think it's two units per floor, right? Yeah, it's, it's a nor, it's a northern unit, so if you take the core of the building, or take the floor plan and split it into a north and south.
Okay.
Each one is a unit.
Is it, Debra, any questions? Okay, thank you so much. All right, at this point, um, we hear from staff.
Good evening, Planning Board members. For the record, Kevin DeFrank, Senior Planner with the Development Services Department. And I will be presenting staff's findings and recommendations for the only item on tonight's agenda, Planning Board case number nineteen sixty-five, which includes the rezoning and waivers requests to allow for the multifamily residential development proposal known as Apogee, located at four-nine-zero-six North Flagler Drive. The applicant, um, presented a thorough, um, explanation of what is being proposed and what the requests, specifically the waivers requested for the subject item. And therefore, staff finds the request complies with the rezoning standards found in section ninety-four thirty-two A. And staff finds the request complies with the site design qualitative development standards found in section ninety-four thirty-five C. And staff finds the request complies with the residential plan development district provisions and requirements, and I would like to submit it into the record. Uh, amended motions page, which identifies the existing conditions that justifies the reduction in the minimum plan development area requirement.
Thank you.
And based on the findings, staff recommends an approval with conditions of the subject rezoning and waivers requests, and here are staff's recommended conditions of approval as provided in the staff report.
Okay, any questions of staff?
Uh, last but not least.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
It's okay. I would like to submit into the record, um, an email that I received at five-oh-one PM today from a resident expressing their objection to the subject agenda item.
Thank you. Hot off the press, eh?
And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. All right, any questions of staff? Uh, Debra, let me start with you. Any questions of staff? Peter?
I have none. Will?
Um, just, so in this letter that, uh, he, he makes the assumption, or she makes the assumption, um, that if a plot is under, uh, two acres, it can cannot, cannot go above four floors. Is, is that?
No, that's not correct.
Okay, thanks.
Patrick, any questions?
My only question, just with respect to the conditions, uh, the applicant is in agreement with all of those conditions, I'm assuming?
We are.
Gene, any questions?
There's no current litigation over the subject property, correct?
No, there isn't.
All right, Gene, are you finished with your questions? I don't want to stop you if you are.
I am, thank you.
All right. All right, if there's no other further questions, we thank you, and now we're going to see if there's any, we know there's some interest from the public to be heard. I have probably seven or eight cards where people have written things in, asked me to read to the record. I will do that after we've heard from the live speakers, and I'm going to call two names for each podium and ask you to come down. Joe Morante, Liz Noonie, if you could be in this podium, and Dr. Cummings and Tatiano Macalanco on this podium. Please come forward. If you wish to be heard tonight, and you have not completed one of the cards, please do so, and then give it to the clerk. All right? Since you're here, first we'll begin with you.
Good evening, Planning Board. My name is Joe Morante. I'm a project manager for A and Associates, a firm that's located in West Palm Beach, Florida. I could tell you that there's right and wrong ways to manage community engagement to ensure that the voices are heard of the community. Related Group has done an outstanding job with involving the communities that will be affected by this project, and sometimes, that's not an easy task. I applaud Related Group's efforts in support of their project. Thank you for your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Liz Noonie, and I live in Northwood. I've been anticipating this project since moving here a few years ago. I believe that Apogee is going to promote local growth, help support small businesses, and overall make. help support small businesses and overall make West Palm Beach a more vibrant, safer and prosperous place to live. I'm eager to see how this project is going to grow our community. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Darren Cummings. I'm a business owner in the Northwood Business District. And I've heard great things about some of the things that Related Group has done in the area, including the redesign, their contribution to the redesign of Curry Park. Uh, I'm looking forward to the completion of the Apogee project because it can bring more business, for us small businesses down there, it can bring more customers down to us. So I approve of the Apogee project.
Thank you so much. All right, please come forward. And while you're getting ready, um, if I could have on this podium, please Claudia Kirk Barto and Angelo Osborne, please. And then after this lady speaks, on that podium, we could have Parisa Hamzataj and then Cheryl Teeger.
Hi, Tatiana McAlanco, 4911 North Flagler Drive, directly across the driveway of 4906 project. I've owned that property coming up to 30 years. It's my income, it's an apartment building, and our driveways directly across from each other. One of my biggest concerns is that they're being, um, asked to waive the right, I mean, the restrictions of having fire and emergency vehicles being able to get onto the property, which directly affects my tenants and me in my property, one. And two, that the drive, the street right there is even narrower than a lot of the other part of Flagler Drive. What's that going to do for all the other people that live right there that can't get in and out of their parking spaces or their apartment buildings? I don't think the emergency vehicle thing has been addressed enough for other people in the neighborhood. I'd like that to be looked at a little bit closer because the fact that they don't have to have, they're getting waived, the fact, I mean, that emergency vehicles don't have to go onto their property. I don't think that's right for the rest of the residents that live directly across the street or next door to them. I don't think this project fits our neighborhood in any way, shape or form, along with all the other ones going up. And I really wish you would readdress, especially the concern of the emergency vehicles because my tenants are very concerned about it. And, um, also look at the quality of life of all the residents that have lived there for, you know, 20, 30, 40 years. Some of us were even born in that community. And I don't think that the quality of life for us and what we're having to go through is being addressed by any of you. And I really wish you would look at that because this has really been a nightmare. I have dump trucks in my front yard almost every day, starting at five o'clock, and it's horrible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Claudia Kirk Barto, board member for the Northwood Harbor Association. Thank you for the opportunity to address our thoughts tonight on the proposed project in our community. Many members of our community were in attendance when Related presented their Apogee proposal to this board over a year ago. During that meeting, we inquired whether any members of the planning board had conducted a site visit to better understand the proposed project's location and potential impact on the adjacent homes and historic community to its west. Since Related's presentation, our community has been steadfast in advocating to the city for the development of a comprehensive master plan. Such a plan is essential to address the critical infrastructure needs, including the improvement of our roads, sidewalks, tree canopy, and to support and enhance the quality of life in our community. We conducted surveys and comply, compiled a list of priorities. This list was made public record on October 21st to 2024 as Rick Green, the Development Services Director, presented it to the mayor commission work session. Related is aware of our community advocating for a master plan and they have met with our neighborhood multiple times over the past several months as our neighborhood raised significant concerns of any proposed project in our community before a master plan is drafted and approved by the city. We are aware, they are aware of our submitted priorities list to the city. During Related's Apogee presentation, our community raised concerns of the proposed project being shoehorned into a small parcel and not transitioning harmoniously with the residential homes to the west. We also raised issues about the lack of frontage landscape to conceal the garage, the impact of traffic due to the staging of emergency vehicles during calls for service on Flagler. This staging would block one or both lanes of traffic extended, for extended periods. And the condos to the north of 40th, 40th Street to 57th currently staged, all of that on their properties. We believe that standard should be upheld. And Related has taken steps to address some of these concerns by lowering the height and unit number, increasing the landscape frontage at Apogee. With no master plan for incentive for height, Related is in talks with the community and city to address our items on our priority list. While the progress has been made, there's still significant work to ensure future developments align with the character and need of our neighborhood. A collective request for a comprehensive master plan remains critical to guide thoughtful, community-oriented development in our area. And I did it under three minutes.
Congratulations. All right, please come forward. Why don't you proceed?
Hello, good evening. Hi, my name is Cheryl and I work with AN Associates. And I have a great working relationship with Related Group. I have attended a number of projects, project outreach meetings and have witnessed firsthand Related Group's willingness to address the concerns of the residents in the north end of the city. It's obvious to me that keeping people engaged and finding solutions in the community is important to Related Group. And I'm here today to express my support for the Apogee project. That's all I have, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Angela Ogburn, a resident of Northwood Harbor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here on the behalf of my mother, who resides at 4912 North Flagler Drive on the north side of the proposed project. She's unable to attend this evening and has asked me to speak on her behalf and share our concerns. We never anticipated living next to a major multifamily condominium built less than 20 feet from our home. This development will significantly change our quality of life and we ask for assurances that our concerns will be addressed if this project moves forward. First, we are concerned that raising the property's elevation and seawall could adversely affect the structural integrity of our seawall. We ask that safeguards be put in place to ensure that no damage occurs and that any necessary reinforcements or adjustments are made to protect the property. Second, the existing six-foot solid concrete wall between our properties provides a level of privacy and security that we value and wish to maintain. We request that this wall be restored to its current height or raised as needed to maintain these protections under construction. Third, we ask that landscaping be thoughtfully placed and maintained to avoid encroachment on our home and garage, preventing damage, wear and pest issues. Finally, we request written assurance that any damage to 4912 North Flagler Drive caused by the construction process, whether structural or cosmetic, will be promptly and fully addressed by the developer. This includes repairs or compensation for issues resulting from construction activity, equipment or materials. Having this assurance will provide a peace of mind as the project moves forward. We appreciate your attention to these matters for your consideration of the impact this development may have on the neighboring properties. Thank you for listening to our concerns and for your commitment to ensuring a responsible and respectful development process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, members of the planning board. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Parisa Hamzataj. I live in the condominium called Placido Mar, which is celebrating the 50th anniversary this year. And I admire the developer of my building and developers in general for creating the built environment and creating something out of nothing. Our Placido Mar building has a storied history tying to the Ray Kroc of McDonald's, the corporate secretary. She was the developer. She built our building and was the first woman to ring the bell on Wall Street. The Apogee project that we're talking about, great name, my favorite building in Miami, that building is very impressive, very impressive. Related Group is very impressive. Tonight, I'm here to impress upon you the reality that this project will not enrich the lives of the neighboring. 145 homeowners, I'm going to repeat that, 145 homeowners in the Placido Mar condominium who value is created from the view. That's it. That property that is 4906, that was purchased for 16 million, is only valuable for the height. That's the only thing that really matters is the height. Their height will negatively impact the 145 families that have been living in Placido Mar. And a real fact is that two years ago, ago, those units were selling for, three of them sold for 500,000 or more. Now, the thought of this, I'm, I'm a licensed CPA in Washington DC and a licensed Realtor here. That first question is, what's going on with development here? The idea that that building will be high in front of our view, that's all that, that we have is that view. It's not the best neighborhood. For 30 years, the city hasn't invested in the neighborhood to enhance the value. It's the view. So while all the setbacks, right now, the current zoning, the MF32, doesn't allow this building this height. It allows, I think, 40 feet or maybe the greater of two feet higher per extra additional foot on the setback. So everyone that's bought in that building, it's like you're changing the rule. We implore you, please do not allow the rezoning. Real, real estate development is a risky business and the developer took a risk. They took a calculated risk and they paid 16 million for that property thinking perhaps they could develop this project. But homeownership shouldn't be a risk. It shouldn't be that people that have been living there for three decades or more have seen their values erode and now properties are on the market there in the 300,000s. Real lives are impacted, 145 families and all we have is the view. That's what it's, that's the value. Thank you.
Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Mary and I'm an owner investor in Northwood. I actually, this is my first time I've ever gone to one of these meetings. So, uh, excuse me if I'm a little kind of unaware of how you do things here, but, but I actually welcome the Apogee project. I think it's, uh, will enhance that community significantly. It is really the only area of West Palm Beach along all of Flagler Drive that really is a bit burdensome for the city in, in many ways, in terms of just visual, in terms of attractiveness, in terms of safety, et cetera. So I welcome the opportunity that, uh, the Alba and Apogee and other development that is being developed there because I think it will enhance the community quite a bit. One comment that I would like to make is that, um, I would like the commit, uh, I guess the committee, to, or the board, to consider, um, some consideration be given to the west side of Flagler Drive at some point as well. Because right now, it's great that things are happening on the right-hand side, uh, east side of, uh, Flagler. But the other side, really, in order for Flagler Drive to be kind of the bragging street of all of West Palm Beach, it really needs to reflect equally on both sides of the, of the road. Thank you.
Thank you. As everyone who wished to speak in person, come forward. Is there anyone else? Have you completed a card yet, sir? Okay, great, please come forward, state your name.
My name's Jonathan Pulaski. I live on 48th Street, about maybe four, 500 feet from the Apogee project and what is also going up right now, Alba. I agree with many of my neighborhood's, uh, community members. There's a punch list of things that I'd like to just briefly go over. Tatiana mentioned she lives literally right across the street from what this will be her driveway. She's moving away. One of the things I pointed out, and maybe that was my email that was passed around, is that I used to work in the yachting industry and I know what has been happening in this community. And a lot of my neighborhood, uh, community members are selling their houses. We're losing our community members that have been there 10, 20 years because all these high rises are going up. These high rises going up to whatever feet they want to, to make them at are going to cast shadows on a lot of these small, single-family homes. I just started a garden in the backyard of my wife and I's house. And, uh, Alba is now reaching a point where it's going to block the sun in my backyard for the first two hours of sunlight. So I'm losing the, you know, capability of having a little garden in my backyard because of the height allowance that some of these projects are, are having. Another, like I said, come from the marine industry. A big concern that I have, which they did not discuss this evening, and a lot of these projects are proposing multi-hundreds of feet docks to go behind these, um, these towers. That poses a big risk to our industry of tourism in this, uh, city. Guys know Manatee Lagoon is at the end of our street. A lot of people go there to see these manatees. They're going to start digging, dredging, pounding rocks, putting cement into the ground. And if you guys are not aware, from the west side of the intercoastal waterway is essentially a safe haven for these manatees all the way down to the two bridges downtown West Palm Beach, Flagler Memorial and, uh, or Okeechobee Bridge. So they go to Manatee Lagoon and they travel all the way on the west side of that, uh, intercoastal waterway. That's essentially their, their highway. And, uh, I can just imagine how many manatees we're going to lose, be damaged, hurt. And they don't have a voice. They can't show up tonight and have picket signs. They can't be there in front of you tonight, board, screaming for, for help. They are not endangered yet, but I can imagine the many years of what we've seen to happen to manatees over the course of the many years. That will happen. The fire department, just the other night at our local meeting, discussed, um, situations and concerns of their ability to perform emergencies at these high rises. They have to then, you know, assess all these situations and they were scared that, you know, they're going to run into a situation where they can't save someone because they can't turn around or the ladder truck can't get in there. I see I'm running out of time. Thank you, board, for your time, appreciate it.
As everyone else who wishes to speak and heard, and if not, I'm going to read some of the written comments I have. Um, Tatiana, I think we already heard from you, correct? Yeah, okay, so I'm going to set that one aside. Let's see, Jonathan Pulaski, I have many concerns regarding the multiple projects proposed for Northwood Harbor. Environment, damage, height of towers, manatees. Mary Murphy, the north end needs a master plan before any more projects can be approved. Joe Perez Dubois, I'm a resident of the south end neighborhood in West Palm Beach. I am also a business owner who has been in the real estate industry for over 20 years. I believe Related Group projects improve the neighborhood and I support the Apogee project. Elizabeth Brockowski, north end needs a master plan to maintain the quality of life of the neighborhood with all the development coming in. Lorraine Manchin, concerns over development of Northwood Historic District on North Flagler Drive impacting infrastructure, natural habitat, public services, water sewer, traffic, overpopulation of high-income residents in a middle-income area, loss of natural habitat. David Manchin, concern over development of historic area infrastructure roadways. Tanya Rich Page Trolley LLC, I'm a co-owner of, um, Roche Trolley. We have attended, uh, I think, many of the outreach meetings and have had many conversations with Related Group regarding their transportation. Um, I'm sorry, I can't make out the word. We appreciate their willingness to address transportation concerns of the residents to the north and the city. And because of their efforts, we support the Apogee project. And lastly, Andrew Luceri, I'm a local business owner of, and I can't make out his writing. I have great working relationships with Related Group. I have something new, have included the comments of their projects. I am impressed with their community commitment to the city of West Palm Beach and support the Apogee project. Okay, I think that concludes the comments. Before we hear back from the applicant, does anyone else have anything they wish to add at this point? And if not, uh, Mr. Seamer, do you have an opportunity to address some of those concerns you heard?
So I'm not going to go through them all, though. There's one that is the, the most important when it comes down to it, right? And we all understand change is hard for people. We don't, we're, we're not going to argue that point with anybody, right? But what I don't do is argue with police officers and fire department. So when we, the, the one thing I did want to talk about is the public safety issue. This was not a statement of, um, waiving the right to go onto the property. There's no waiver that says now the fire department's not allowed on the property, that the trucks are. This was a function of working with the fire department on what is the best way to accommodate what they need and how they work in these circumstances. It's highly technical. I'm not going to talk about it because I don't know nearly enough about it. What I can tell you is that this- What I can tell you is that this came from the fire department on how this should work. So, while I understand the concerns, I want everybody to understand this was not us saying this is how we're going to do it. It's sitting with everybody who are professionals, and the fire department reviewing, and the fire department giving us comments, and the fire department saying this is the safest way to manage these things. So, while I do understand that, I want to, really, for the public as much as anything else, to, to make sure it's clear that that is coming from the fire department. If there are any specific questions that you all have about any of the comments?
I have one specific question. I know whether it's better directed to you or to John Roach. Out of curiosity, what could be built of right right now? Because some of the comments we heard is that buildings of a certain size themselves would be burdensome to the community. So, I just wanted, by comparison, what could be built of right today?
It's, by right, you could put a forty, forty-foot-high building with theoretically the same number of units as micro-units. So, the traffic, the fire, the impacts, the roads, all that stuff wouldn't change. You could squeeze the building piece by piece theoretically. If you, there's a lot of things that go into that and add height. How much that would go to, we'd actually have to do a study to. But as you go in, and the, the code doesn't allow for what we often refer to as the wedding cake, right? So, that you've got coming in piece by piece as you go up. So, you sort of take the highest point, and that's what you would measure. So, even though at certain points it comes, becomes more narrow, it doesn't matter. So, it's hard to sort of get to the by right in that circumstance.
Okay. Thank you. All right. At this point, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Does anyone have any general comments? Or should we go down the road? Or how do you want to proceed? I'll do one.
Just to clarify the issue, I know there's several of the neighbors that were concerned about fire, and I wanted to clarify the fact that this is a high-rise building. High-rise buildings have a completely different set of building code requirements, and to have a ladder truck come into this side would be extremely unusual. For a high-rise building, the fires are fought from inside. The fire department has a key to the elevators. They will go up to the elevator, to the floor, and fight the fire, fire hose cabinets, and so on. Fires are fought inside. Hardly ever you'll ever see a ladder truck come up because you can't really reach the building with a ladder truck. And as the applicant said, all of these plans get approved by the city fire department. So, rest assured that it's going to meet all of the building code requirements once it goes up.
Okay. Other comments? I'll just go down. Gene, any comments you'd like to say this time? I'm just going to go down the row here.
No, I, I was most concerned as to whether there was any merit to the, the fire department concerns, and so those concerns have been satisfied based on testimony that I've, I've heard.
Patrick, any thoughts?
I'd just like to say I appreciate the applicant's diligence in continuing to work with the community and revise their proposal to something that works for the city. Thank you.
Will?
No, I think I saw some, something in the packet about a, like a construction management plan, right? That they have to submit as to how they're going to make sure the property stays clean, where the construction workers park, how to minimize impact. Okay? Because that's been a concern, you know, in the area on South Flagler with contractors' parking, et cetera. So, thank you for addressing that. It seems like the fire emergency issue is, is really, the twenty-four versus the twenty-two feet is, it works for them, and that's the important thing, correct? All right. Is, somebody had brought up a concern about the, the seawall. Is there any concerns with that? You guys are going to be building a new seawall, right?
Probably, you shouldn't be directing questions at them at this point. This is a chance for your comments.
Oh.
Yeah. It's because they've already testified, so.
Okay.
Sam chastises me if I don't control that. But you can ask it rhetorically. They just can't reply at this point.
Yeah, then I have no questions.
But I do, I do want to piggyback on what he said. I know you're taking notes, and as this property owner had some specific concerns, I know in the past you've been very good about following up with them, and we would ask that you do so consistent with Will's comments. Peter, any comments? Deborah?
No.
Okay. I'll make just, I'm so sorry. I thought you were going to make, go ahead.
The construction management plan does cover quite a bit of the concerns expressed here this evening. And so, I do commend first the developers and the planning staff for, you know, working that way to make sure everything is covered. I did have a slight concern with the fire concerns that were brought up, but it's been explained. And of course, in the past, you know, we know that there've been meetings with the homeowners, the condo owners, so that they try to work out all of their concerns as possible. But, you know, I, I've, I've listened to a lot of these cases, so as you look at the construction management plan, there's a lot of pages to read, but you do see where every effort has been taken to alleviate those type of concerns that come up, and definitely with the concerns about emergency vehicles getting into the property.
So, I just want to make some general comments as well, and I will be supportive of this. Let me say that on the outset. We have to balance a lot of needs here, needs for the whole city, and not always just individual neighborhoods and individual property owners, and these are difficult balancing acts. There is a huge demand in the city for housing. There is a need for investment in the north end. The first time this project came before the board, we voted it down because of the height, because we did not feel there was sufficient interaction with the community. We've heard a lot of testimony this evening that that interaction was there. Not all of it was agreed to, but the effort was made, the communications occurred, adjustments were made, city staff's issues were addressed. And so, they have done what we've asked of them. So, at this juncture, are there any other comments? If not, I'm looking for a motion. And there was an amended one here, just so you.
Sure. I'll do the motion. Or a motion. Do you need a second?
No, you got to read it.
Okay. Cool.
You don't get away that easy.
I move that the planning board recommend to the city commission approval of Planning Board Case nineteen sixty-five, a request by John Roach of Gunster, on behalf of forty-nine oh-six North Flagler Drive LLC for a rezoning change, rezoning to change the zoning designation of the property consisting of approximately one point four-five acres and located at forty-nine oh-six North Flagler Drive for multifamily high-density MF thirty-two to residential plan development. To allow for the construction of a thirty-nine-unit multifamily development, the planning board finds that approval, finds that approval for development on an area less than two acres is justified by the reduction meeting the following finding. A particular circumstances justify such reduction. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with the required standards in section ninety-four dash thirty-two A, ninety-four dash thirty-five C, and ninety-four dash two oh-seven C of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations. In addition, this recommendation is made subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the Zoning and Land Development Regulations and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city of West Palm Beach.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on our agenda are code revision cases, of which there are none. That then brings us to other business, unfinished business, new business. Is there anything more? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you.